Good afternoon and welcome to the reconvened budget hearings for Pittsburgh City Council for 2022 budget. This afternoon, we're joined by Bill Urbannick, who is our Budget Director. He will give a brief overview of the budget items we'll be discussing today. We will begin with the Carnegie Library, and we are joined by Carlin Vaz and our Executive Director, Mary Francis. And before we go to the library, Bill, if you'll read the brief overview that you have.
Sure. First, we'll talk about Carnegie Library, which was established as a public trust in 1895. Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh serves the citizens of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County with a distinguished history of leadership among the country's great public libraries. Through its 19 neighborhood locations, including Maine, and the Library for the Blind and Physically Handicapped, Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh is the region's most visited asset, with $2.6 million visitors annually.
Would you repeat that, please, Bill?
2.6 million visitors.
Say that one more time. The most visited regional asset.
Most visited regional asset with 2.6 million visitors. Sorry about the dollar comment. I just have money on my brain lately. Each year, the library provides valuable resources, programs, classes, and training opportunities that engage the community in literacy and lifelong learning. The city retains ownership of 10 of the 19 existing libraries, as well as a number of the closed libraries. From a budgetary aspect this year, and as always, the city pays the library $40,000 per year for the original 1890s agreement with Andrew Carnegie. This is reflected as an expenditure within the Finance Department. The city collects the .25 mil real estate tax on behalf of the library. The 2022 budget was $49,421 of revenue budgeted as library tax administrative fees. That's half of what it was collected in 2021. The city sometimes also, also the city sometimes acts as a pass-through for library grants, such as the $750,000 state grant received in 2020 for the library for the blind and physically handicapped. These grants are not reflected in either the operating or capital budgets.
Good. Thank you. Excuse me. So we are joined this afternoon by Carlin Vaz and our, our Executive Director of the Carnegie Library, Mary Francis. Who would like to go first? Is it Carlin? Do you join in, or is it going to go straight to Mary Francis?
Straight to Mary Francis.
Okay, welcome.
Welcome. Hello, hello. Thank you so much. I really do regret that I'm not able to join you right there at the table. It's one of my favorite things to do every year, not this year. Also, Bill, we need to get you some updated language. We have changed the name of the Library for the Blind and Physically Handicapped to the Library for Accessible Media for Pennsylvania. So it's LAMP now, L-A-M-P, more reflective of what the work is. And we're really pleased about that. So just going to give you a few highlights of what's going on at the library. First of all, we are rebounding from the pandemic. We have almost restored all of our hours everywhere. We are kind of in the same situation as many entities in that, you know, we're, we're have to get our staffing back up to what it was pre-pandemic. And we're working on that very hard now, and we'll focus in the new year so that we can get back to our, all of our original hours. But we have started in-person programming at all of our locations in October. So we have storytimes and book discussion groups and computer classes and other activities that are going on, and we're building that up as well. So we're really excited about that. I think many of you may know that we have been working to update, renovate, or replace all of our locations throughout the city. In the past year, we opened a beautifully, beautifully renovated library in Mount Washington. You know, it was a historic building, and it's just an amazing renovation. If you have not been up there to see it, there are many reasons to go to Mount Washington, and our library is certainly one of them. Likewise, our downtown library was reopened in its current location, but it's been expanded, and it's another gorgeous renovation. We've got all kinds of new spaces. It's, it's almost, not quite doubled in space. It's, I think we went from 12, 5 to 20,000 square feet, but it's still, it's beautiful, and there's a real teen space, a real children's space. It's a wonderful asset and amenity for downtown. And next week, on December 7th, at 4 o'clock, you are all welcome to join us at LAMP, the Library of Accessible Media for Pennsylvanians on Baum Boulevard. We are, we renovated that location, and it's again, another gorgeous building. All we do is gorgeous buildings, you know that. We, we did a great renovation there. We'll have our ribbon cutting, and that new space will be there to welcome that community. So we're really, really pleased. Also want to make sure that our friends on City Council know that we have actually some new managers at many of our branches. I was trying to count them up. I think we've got Brookline, Beachview, West End, Mount Washington, Downtown East Liberty, Hazelwood, Woods Run, and Hill District all have new managers in the last year or so. So if, I would encourage anybody on City Council, if you've not stopped up in to, to meet and greet your manager, whether they're new or not, there's always a reason to go into your library and say hello and see what's new. We are, this is our 125th anniversary. We just wrapped up our 125th anniversary year. We share that with the Carnegie Museums, and we had an event on November 6th and 7th, which was called Crash the Carnegie's. If you didn't come, you missed a wonderful event. It was two days, Saturday and Sunday. We had all kinds of activities going on throughout both, well, the entire campus. It was inside, it was outside. You could move freely between the museum and the library. Museum was open for free. There were a number of other assets, like the ballet and Science Center, and just amazing things going on. And it was really, really fun. And we saw 4,000 people a day coming to the library. And I think the museum saw as many coming through their doors. So it was really an amazing time. The other thing that I will mention, and I think this is just important to know, in conjunction with the Allegheny County Library Association and the Regional Asset District, Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh has embarked on a shared services initiative. So we are actually in the process of constructing some services that will be delivered by our library to the libraries in the county as a way of creating, I think, some efficiencies among the libraries, but also as a way of supporting our sister libraries throughout Allegheny County. What we're rolling out first is going to be, we're going to be providing some support, an infrastructure for fundraising for libraries throughout the county. We are also in the process of working on an HR model, a human resources model. And there's several others of these rolling out in the next year. I think this is a really exciting initiative and wonderful opportunity to create some new ways of connecting libraries throughout the county. And then the final thing that I will note is, as many of you know, I am retiring at the end of this year. And so December 31st will be my last day as President and Director of Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh. It's been a wonderful 10-year run, and I have truly enjoyed virtually every minute of it. There is a director search underway right now. There's a committee of our board that is in the process of recruiting and vetting for a new library director. Probably won't be in place by January 1st, so we will have an interim model. But I think that's something really to look forward to, because new leadership always brings new ideas and new energy. And I think that's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for our library and our community. But with that, I just want to say that I absolutely positively want to thank everyone on City Council, and, and many of the folks that work throughout the city. They have always been supportive of Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh, really understand that we are true assets in the neighborhoods, working hard to support the people that we serve in the city. And we can't do what we do without the support of council and of the city. I always say, the library is something that we all do together, and it really does take everyone. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for doing your part over these last 10 years to support the library. And with that, I'll see if Carlin wants to add anything. I think you covered it all. Thank you, Mary Francis.
So this is always my favorite budget hearing, because it gives the, the public at large an opportunity to see what their local library is doing on a yearly basis. And every year, even I am, am surprised when I hear the litany of accomplishments that have taken place through, throughout the Carnegie Library system for the previous year. You know, we are here, and we are working very, very hard to bring literacy and learning and opportunity to everyone that calls Pittsburgh home. You know, my, my, my favorite thing about the, the library is free to the people. It's just, you know, it's up to you to use it and make use of the, the opportunities that we provide. And under leadership like yours, Mary Francis, we have provided ample opportunity to participate, engage, and expand your horizons if you choose to do so. So I personally would like to offer up my, my, you know, sincere thanks for 10 wonderful years. I've, I've had the pleasure of serving on the board for your entire director. And we've had, you know, we've had our ups and our downs, the good times, the bad times, but damn it, we, we came through each and every one of them. And we, we came through because we worked collectively and cooperatively in the best interest of the, the people that use the library system. And, you know, good and bad both, you know, we survived. Not only did we survive, we thrived.
Absolutely.
And your leadership was instrumental in, in, in our ability to accomplish that. You came along at exactly the, the time that we needed. The, the leadership style, I should think of a better word than that, but that you brought, it was perfectly tuned to exactly the needs of the library at a very, very difficult time. We were really charged with reinventing ourselves and how we, we imagined how we served the community that we serve. And I truly, I don't believe it would have been possible without your leadership and you being at the helm to help us through those difficult times. So we will miss you terribly. But change is inevitable. You know, change is inevitable. And, and I think it is a, I think is a testament to your professionalism, understand when it's time to say, this has been a good run. I've enjoyed every minute of it, but it's, it's an opportunity to step aside and allow fresh leadership to come in and assume the role. And I think that speaks very, very highly to, to, as I said, your professionalism. So we'll miss you terribly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Bruce. I really appreciate it. And, and I know that you have been by our side through some really interesting and difficult and challenging times. And I have always valued your wise counsel and your support. So it, you know, like I said, we, we did this all together, and it took all of us. So I appreciate that. And I appreciate the support of your colleagues as well.
Yeah. But we'll see you for the board meeting on the 13th, I believe.
It will. You will. Yeah.
Of course, you know, just for the public at large, really want to sign off by saying that we wish you Godspeed and nothing but the very best in, in everything that you attempt once you leave the comfort and safety of the Carnegie Library.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Always for being here. Bye, guys.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
So we may need to take maybe a little break. I don't know if Jam's on. Oh, good. Okay, great. So we can go directly in to our next budget hearing, which is our Commission on Human Relations. We are joined by the Director, Jam. Are you, I don't see you. Okay. Hey, Jam, how are you? Glad you're here. Bill, I'm going to turn it over to you for a brief summary, and then we'll turn it over to the Director.
Bill, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Let me go again. The Commission on Human Relations is the official civil rights agency for the city of Pittsburgh. It is empowered by chapters 651 through 659 of Pittsburgh City Code to enforce civil rights laws, eliminate discrimination, and deal with matters of intergroup conflict. From a budgetary aspect this year, the highlights are: Total operating budget, not including the trust funds and federal funds, is $553,898. That's an increase of $13,646 from last year, or 2.5%. Total budget across operating and trust funds is $729,228. That's an increase of $11,552, 1.6%. Total full-time positions in all three funds, eight, the same as in previous years. The part-time administrative assistant position that was added to the 2021 budget has been eliminated. There's a cost savings there of $29,350. Non-salary subclasses adjusted across eight line items, there is no net change. There's also a few trust funds, or a couple of trust funds here. Equal Opportunity Commission Trust Fund, projected 2022 balance is $82,307, anticipated 22 grant from the federal government of $35,000, same as prior years. Projected spending $46,000, an increase of $2,380. The HUD Trust Fund is the other. Projected 2022 beginning balance is $388,294, anticipated 2022 grant from the federal government is $70,000, same as prior years. Projected spending is $129,021, a decrease of $4,474. There are no capital projects for the Commission on Human Relations. The usual $100,000 for fair housing is not projected to reappear until 2025. There is still the $363,000 remaining in prior year CDBG allocations that are available to the Commission.
Bill, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, we're going to turn it over. Jam, welcome. I think, are you going to go first for us?
Yeah, I.
Hi, welcome.
Hello. And yeah, we do also have our Chair, Lady Barlow, on. So when I'm done, anything that she would like to add. But Bill did a really great job of giving an overview of what the Commission is and does. We are the Civil Rights Enforcement Agency for the city of Pittsburgh. We do investigations of claims of discrimination in our city, and we also do the necessary outreach and policy development. So to make sure that everyone in the city of Pittsburgh knows what their rights are under City Code. And as regards discrimination, we are charged with doing the outreach for that. So since Bill did just such a great job, I'll just give a couple of points about the past year and what was in our, our budget requests, and what we see for the future, really. So, you know, 2021 was a very tough year for the Commission. We had a staffing cut from the previous year, and we're glad to see that that position has returned. That was the part-time administrator, had been a full-time administrator prior to 2021, and we're happy to see that we got that position back. So we're, we're extremely grateful for that. The eviction moratorium that the, the, the city put into place was run through the Commission. So it, the legislation pointed to the Commission to try to create the process and to process the applications and, and make determinations as regards to that, that piece of legislation. That is something that our office stepped up to do, though it's outside of our ordinary duties, and though it came with no additional funding, we were able to assist the city in that way, because we have the regulatory experience and the administrative experience. So we were happy to help with that and to try to provide a service to landlords and tenants in the city to make sure that they were treating one another fairly. We have been still assisting council and in other entities with policy and legislative updates that we hope that will be helpful to increase equity in our city. And what was in our budget request reflects a situation that is relatively dire for the Commission. You know, the HUD funding that we receive doesn't completely cover our expenses for our investigation. So for those who are, you know, unfamiliar with our funding streams, the city operating budget is one part of it. We receive, as Bill outlines, funding from federal agencies to perform investigations. That doesn't cover the cost of investigation. So what we discovered was happening was that our HUD Trust Fund was receiving less funding than, was being taken out of it every year. So we do have a relatively dire situation to try to correct that problem, so that we're still able to offer housing discrimination, anti-discrimination enforcement in the city. So part of what we requested this year is to move some of the costs that were coming out of our HUD Trust Fund into the operating budget. And those requests were accepted. So we're extremely excited and grateful. It will take a lot of work over the next few years to make sure that, that, that funding deficit closes completely. But this is a great step in the right direction. You know, over the past couple year, year, again, referring to 2020, we've had a huge increase in, in intakes. So something that we're only now completely quantifying towards the end of the year. But as much as 2020 was a slower year for us, 2021 has turned out to be a, a very productive year for discrimination complaints. We have received many more, and we are processing many more. So at this point, you know, we have three investigators in our, in our budget, and we have maybe 80 or 90 complaints to investigate. So we're hoping to see in coming years, maybe additional funding for investigation, ways that we can reach more people so that they can understand what their rights are, so that we can prevent discrimination. Those are some of the things that we're hoping to accomplish in the next year, so that we can really meet this increase in intakes head-on and see where, where we are, where we are making the mistakes, where we as Pittsburgh are making the mistakes and try to correct those and reduce discrimination in our city. You know, I think this is really a, an important, a dire time for civil rights in our city. It's kind of a sink or swim moment, I will call it. You know, we're really starting to just touch the surface of what is truly happening in our city. And the Commission is here to make sure that we know what discrimination is occurring, make sure that everybody knows what their rights and responsibilities are, and make sure that if discrimination happens, there is an agency that people can come to, to address it. So that is just about all for me. I'm really grateful that we're moving in the right direction. I'm excited to see more movement in the future. And I'm happy to, to assist council, the administration, any person in Pittsburgh to understand what it is that we do and to get involved. So thank you so much. And I'll turn it over if, if our Chair, Lady Barlow, has anything that she wanted to add.
Okay, thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, welcome. Hi, City Council. Thank you so much for joining us on this, this effort to ensure civil rights for the people of our city. You understand how important this work is and, and how much of it remains to be done. We see cases every day as, as a Commissioner, as I serve on our compliance review section and review the excellent work of our investigators. We get a glimpse of some of the situations of discrimination faced in housing, employment, and public accommodation by our fellow citizens. And through the work of the Commission, we have the opportunity to help ameliorate these circumstances, help make sure that people who have faced discrimination receive the attention and care that they deserve, and to help educate our employers and our landlords, our business owners, and our other entities around the importance of following the law and ensuring equal access across the city. This is big work. It takes dollars to do it. It takes a talented staff like the one we have. And it's a real privilege to serve on the Commission and a privilege to bring to you this budget request, which is so important for our ability to continue this necessary work. So thank you for your support of the Commission, not only in this budget season, but also in the other ways that City Council has supported the expansion of protections, the, the recent expansion of domestic violence protections in cases of employment, as one example, and I, and, and your continued interest in this, this, this aspect of the city's work.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the work that you do. As you said, and as we all know, it's difficult and challenging work in a difficult and challenging time. But we appreciate your professionalism and all that you bring to your positions. And we thank you for being here with us today. And now we're going to move on to the Business Improvement District portion of our budget hearing. I'm going to surrender the chair, and we're going to bring in our Finance Chair, Councilman LaBelle.
Sure. So we'll continue on. I'm going to ask our Budget Director to read both through the, are you reading Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership?
Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership first, then we'll ask him to read the O-Bid, and then we'll turn it over to our guest. Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership was formed in 1996 by downtown businesses, professionals, organizations, foundations, and residents. The PDP develops and implements innovative programs and initiatives to enhance downtown neighborhood. They also promote and market this great urban center to millions of people, was the region's premier destination to do business, to call home, or to visit for the best shopping, in shopping and dining and entertainment. PDP also stands as staunch advocates for all those who make downtown part of their lives, for businesses, to workers, to residents. July, City Council extended the designation of the Downtown Pittsburgh Partnership Business Improvement District through 2026. The Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership, from a budgetary aspect, has no direct impact on either the operating or capital budget. The PDP does have a city contract for cleaning services that is housed within the South Side Parking Enhancement District Trust Fund, which does not require an annual council appropriation. The Oakland Business Improvement District is an economic development agency representing local businesses, commercial property owners, universities, hospitals, nonprofit and government organizations, working to make Oakland, Pittsburgh's most vibrant business district community. The organization also takes the lead on Innovation Oakland, a project with the goal of making Oakland's largest business, business district, the hub of technology and innovation, and Startup Oakland, a campaign helping to grow Oakland startup community. In 2018, City Council extended the designation of the Oakland Business Improvement District O-Bid for an additional five years, not back up to 2023. The Oakland Business Improvement District does have, has no direct impact on the operating budget. Council members Strasburger and Kraus have directed some of their CDBG ULO dollars to the O-Bid in prior years.
Thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to our guests if they wish to share anything in addition to that. We can begin with Mr. Waldrop, followed by Georgia.
Thanks, Councilman LaBelle, and appreciate the time. I'm Jeremy Waldrop, President CEO of the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you all today. As you heard, the PDP is comprised of business community leaders, property owners, civic organizations, and residents who provide energy, vision, and advocacy for downtown Pittsburgh. We continue to provide a range of services to support our mission, which is to advance initiatives that foster economic vitality and improve downtown life for a moment or a lifetime. 2021 has continued to be a challenging year, particularly here in downtown Pittsburgh, where work from home policies have severely impacted every facet of downtown life. And while we began to see increases in the number of people in downtown, we are still 34% below our 2019 numbers for daily activity, with just over 76,000 people visiting downtown on an average basis. With that, we have been hard at work at really reimagining every component of our work to support hundreds of small businesses that are independently to support hundreds of small businesses that are independently owned, that call downtown home. Throughout the year, the PDP's clean team is more essential than ever with ongoing efforts at maintaining the safety and cleanliness of downtown Pittsburgh. This includes conducting regular deep cleaning and sharing that we are creating a welcoming and safe environment for folks. The team has taken great pride in their consistent efforts to clean downtown streets as we welcome more people back into downtown. Working with social service agencies this year, our outreach team continued to be an invaluable asset as it provided critical support to those in need. The team offered connection to mental health services, assisted in securing housing and provided hygiene kits and coats to ensure the safety and well-being of those in need. We appreciate the investment that the city has made to create the Allegheny Health Network's Urban Health and Street Medicine Program in partnership with the City of Pittsburgh's Office of Community Health and Safety in creating a new community outreach hub on Smithfield Street. The ribbon cutting ceremony was just last week and we are really excited to have these much-needed services supporting individuals in need in downtown, supporting downtown's recovery. We look forward to seeing the impact of these enhanced services on our community. In 2020, we worked closely with the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and Public Safety to rethink a number of streets with a high concentration of restaurants, allowing for more safe outdoor dining spaces, creating socially-distanced space that provided a lifeline to many of these businesses that were severely impacted by the pandemic. These streeters popped up along Penn Avenue, Sixth Street and Market Square. And as the pandemic continues to wreak havoc on our local restaurant community, we are working with stakeholders on Sixth Street and Penn Avenue to determine how we can successfully modify the streets to provide more permanent outdoor space for outdoor dining and pedestrian activity. We believe that transforming our streets into better places for people are critical to the success and evolution of downtown Pittsburgh. We greatly appreciate the support of City Council in advancing and advocating for these efforts through capital allocation and new rules that increase outdoor dining and more vibrant streets. In addition to supporting more outdoor seating, we were able to raise significant dollars to purchase over sixty-eight thousand mills from downtown restaurants that were distributed by 412 Food Rescue to individuals in need throughout the past year. This program allowed twenty-one restaurants to participate, providing on average of twenty-six thousand dollars each cell to each restaurant. This program was supported generously by the Richard King Mellon Foundation with additional support provided by the City of Pittsburgh and individual contributors. This is one of the examples of the way in which our organization supported the over fifty restaurants, twenty-four retailers and fourteen hotels that participated in a range of programs and marketing initiatives like our Spread the Love Valentine's Campaign to help them remain open and continue to provide jobs to their staff throughout the pandemic. Our events and programming teams were more important than ever this year, providing much-needed attractions that encouraged and welcomed people back into downtown. We continue to operate weekly events like the Farmer's Market, Market Square, Saturday Night Markets and Yoga in the Square. In addition, we welcomed the Allegheny Overlook, a pop-up park in downtown Pittsburgh that provided a home to cultural events and attractions, live music, food and drink for tens of thousands of people this summer season. I'd like to thank the City of Pittsburgh for their support and allowing us to pilot this event and are looking forward to continuing conversations with our partners at Riverlife and the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust and the city to determine ways in which we can provide much more needed riverfront attractions in downtown Pittsburgh. Last week, we hope that you all enjoyed yourself as we hosted the Sixtieth Annual Light Up Night. It was an opportunity to welcome the region back to downtown Pittsburgh to kick off the holiday season like no one else can. The move to Saturday was well-received by patrons and businesses. And we appreciate the support of partners like Highmark, People's Gas and Highwoods in making this holiday season in downtown a special destination for everyone in our city and our region. In conjunction with Light Up Night, we opened the Tenth Annual People's Gas Holiday Market in Market Square. The market is off to a very successful start and serves as an anchor destination, welcoming people to get out and explore, shop, eat and drink throughout downtown Pittsburgh. As you'll see included in the budget, the 2022 bid budget is two million four hundred and forty-six thousand ten dollars. As in past years, the bid allocation will be primarily dedicated to cleaning and outreach efforts with sixty-five percent of those funds going to those critical services. Programs to market and promote downtown Pittsburgh account for sixteen percent of the budget, five percent for transportation-related initiatives and seven percent for economic development and nine percent for administrative services. I'd like to thank you all for your support of the Business Improvement District and our extension that we received earlier this year. With the renewal of the bid for a five-year term, we'll continue to work to support the recovery and growth of downtown Pittsburgh. We look forward to working with council and the new mayoral administration. And to that end, have identified several key priorities in 2022. This includes enhancing public safety and social service accessibility and visibility in the downtown core, building upon the successful work that's happened at the city and with AHN, and continuing to ensure that the, the support that individuals in need have, are available to, to them in our neighborhood. We also are looking for ways to improve the public realm and transportation infrastructure. The city is expected to begin the Smithfield redevelopment project, which we're really excited about. We are also very much looking forward to conversations continuing about the ideas to transform Sixth Street and Penn Avenue as dining destinations. And then also looking at, at new bus infrastructure, particularly with the BRT, as it, as planning continues to move forward and implementation is soon to begin there. But just really looking at ways that we can enhance our street fronts and storefronts. We're also looking at how we can ensure the downtown economy thrives. The pandemic has really changed the way that people work. And while we're not sure when folks will be back in their office, we do know that things have changed and that there will be much more flexibility in the workforce moving forward. And what does that mean for a central business district like ours at the primary, primarily strong market for commercial office? And a, and a, a large bulk of our, of our real estate in downtown dedicated to commercial office space. So looking at ways that we can rethink those traditional office buildings. Many of them are historic. Are there ways for us to work with the private development community to create housing opportunities? It's something that we are very interested in and will be looking to City Council to get creative and helping us to support a stronger and more resilient economy here in downtown Pittsburgh. We'd also like to really think through how we better support the small business ecosystem here in downtown Pittsburgh. We have seen a number of businesses close as a result of the pandemic. And that's creating new opportunities to diversify the types of businesses and the services that are offered here in the core. Thank you to City Council for understanding the important role that downtown Pittsburgh plays in our regional economy. We look forward to working with you to encourage a robust recovery here in downtown Pittsburgh and ways that we can build a stronger, more resilient downtown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Petropolis?
Good afternoon. Hello, Councilman Lavelle and, and Councilman Kraus and the rest of the crew. Thank you. It's always hard to follow Jeremy Waldrop. I just want to commend him and his team. Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership just continues to do amazing things and they continue to put Pittsburgh on the national map in terms of strong cities and strong commercial districts. And I also just wanted to plug and add, his team and him as well continue to be great partners to myself and to the staff and board in Oakland. I can't tell you how much in the last couple of years, especially Jeremy, I, Jeremy and I and everyone have just been back and forth, working as a team, working in partnerships to get through this pandemic, to, to help our small business community and we continue to do so. So thank, I, I personally want to thank Jeremy and everything that his team has done. So I'm Georgia Petropolis, the Executive Director of the Oakland Business Improvement District. A bit of follow-up, speaking on a few things as well that, that Jeremy spoke to. We are the second-largest commercial district in Pittsburgh. We're also a downtown to the region. We are the backyard of the large employers of the universities, hospitals and cultural amenities. I have a Board of Directors who are thirty-one members strong and our organization represents a little over two hundred and fifty business owners, commercial property owners. And we're excited to see many more residents living in our commercial district as well as we see investments in residential towers and residential living. So as, as Jeremy stated, we continued to be working through the pandemic this past year. Our primary focus was on how do we keep our business owners and our businesses open? How do we keep the district safe? How do we keep it active? And it took, definitely took a village. I want to commend the property owners and the universities and the hospitals and all of our employers, the city, the work of all of the city departments from Domi to Public Works to City Planning, to the Bureau of Police. We couldn't have done it without them either. It's, it's really been a continued tag team and of course, especially with our Oakland Council offices. Councilperson Straussberger, Councilman Lavelle and Councilman Kraus, at least here in Oakland and for O bid, those are the three offices that we really look to and we work with continually throughout the year. Twenty twenty-one, yeah, though, continued to be a strong year for us and we were happy to see quite a few things that we unveiled. First and foremost, our Board of Directors completed their first organizational strategic plan. It was actually finished year end 2020, but we began immediately. Nothing sits on a shelf in our organization. We started to implement. That plan calls for the growth of O bid so that we can provide continued growing services to meet the demands of Oakland. Oakland is on fire right now. It's amazing, in a good way. That's a positive statement, by the way. You know, we are in the, in the throes of over one point nine billion dollars of investment current as well as planned in the next few years. If you haven't come through Oakland in a while, you will be very surprised. It will feel like a very different part of the city. We're definitely having a fantastic development boom, fantastic investment occurring. From the standpoint of the small business owners, we also, like downtown and many other neighborhoods across the, across the city, we're managing an outdoor dining program. We were, we, we had a full street closure as well as parking lane closures. So again, big thank you to all of our city offices, to the Parking Authority. We couldn't have continued to maintain these spaces without them. That was a huge help, not only to the business owners, but also to the general public. People love to sit outdoors, especially when the weather is nice. There is the feeling that it was, could be, it could have been safer at moments when there was a higher need for social distancing. And it honestly just was a great attraction as well. So that has been a success. And we hope to continue to work with the city and with all of the colleagues across, across Pittsburgh on what will this dining program look like in 2022 and how can we continue to provide that as well as still provide for what our community needs. So that was a big success for us. We enjoyed it very much. We also took advantage of some incredible placemaking and activation. O bid created a new position. We have a, a manager of placemaking and activation like Kate Urban, who's been doing incredible work on bringing new ideas and, and new activity to, to Oakland. Again, that was another suggestion that came out of the, the, the board's comprehensive plan. So we began that implementation this year. Through her, we saw a variety of new activities from new street art, new public art, live music. We were very focused on, on helping, supporting all entrepreneurs and small business owners from musicians to artists to, of course, our restaurant and retail operators. So this was a year that we could give back and help those that have been struggling, continue to struggle through this pandemic. And we also, of course, did street activation. I think many of you remembered the mini golf that we did in Oakland and that was through our partner, the Pittsburgh Innovation District. So it was new types of activities that you wouldn't normally feel or do on a city street. And we tried those out to great success. This was also the year that we unveiled our first retail pop-up and it started out as a pop-up. But now it really is a full-blown retail studio incubator that has over thirty of the small business entrepreneurs and vendors. They're artisans. It's called Argal Studio. It's very exciting. It's on Forbes Avenue, right in the heart of Oakland. Again, another way to support local, another way to support our small business owners. And it's just beautiful stuff from, from art to clothing to jewelry, just amazing products that are made here, made with love, made here at home. So we were very excited about putting that out as well this year. Currently, in the last three months alone, we've seen six new restaurants open up in Oakland and we have three more that are coming soon. So that's a little, close, almost ten small businesses. We've had larger establishments open up in our commercial district as well that we were very excited about. But I didn't want to prioritize and focus on the small business ownership growth. And that's, that's a good sign and we hope to continue to see that type of growth and investment happening in, in the backyard. Lastly, just wanted to note we unveiled a new website. Feel free to check it out, oaklandpittsburgh.com. Very excited. It's really stressing our new mission, which is Oakland is Pennsylvania's global center. And we want to continue to make sure that we represent that and we represent that well. And this weekend, Oakland is hosting the Shop Small Oakland Crawl Event on Friday and Saturday as a way to also continue to highlight the shopping, bringing people here into Oakland for the shopping season. So thank you again for everything all, all of our partners have done for us. And we look forward to 2022 and let's hope everything goes well and stay safe.
Thank you. Thank you very much and thank you both for your presentation today. Just very quickly, obviously, the city both supports both O bid and the PDP and we thank you for all your work. Excuse me. Also, just want to thank you for the innovation you all brought through the pandemic in terms of how we reimagine our open space, how we support our businesses, much of which are now still in place due to sort of how you rethought our, our streets and our sidewalks. So just wanted to thank you both for your work, especially on supporting our businesses. Also, since, since I got you here, Jeremy, you're on my to-do list. I recently had a meeting with some businesses in Uptown about street litter and some other stuff. And one of the things we spoke about was, it's not, it's probably not appropriate now, but did it make sense for them to look at creating an organization that could maintain it? But in the interim, did it also make sense to maybe talk to the PDP about expanding street cleaning services? And I told them, of course, we had to figure out how to cover the cost for that. But at, at some point, I would reach out to you to talk to you about it. So it's on a long list of to-do, but I figure since I have you here for a couple of seconds, I at least mention it to you. So when, so when I actually pick up the phone, you'll know why I'm calling.
Yeah, no, that, that sounds great. We'd be happy to have those conversations. Fifth and Forbes are just an important corridor that connects downtown to Oakland and, and really the growth that, that, that is happening in Uptown. I think it's a great, great opportunity and great timing to, to really invest in these, these services. So happy to, to discuss and figure out ways that we can help.
Okay, appreciate it. With that, we thank you for your time. You all can feel free to leave. I do need to announce that our budget hearings will continue tomorrow with the Department of Finance and Department of Law, including the Ethics Board, at one-thirty tomorrow afternoon. And I'll be chaired by myself. With that, we are in recess until then.